We're going to begin. Do I have a motion open the hearing?
Motion open.
Second. Second, in favor.
Aye.
Okay, so our item on the agenda this evening is Habitat for Humanity. Four Homestead Ave, Auburn, Mass. Seeking a special permit under section 5.4 that will include an increase in minimum lot size, an increase or a decrease in the minimum required lot frontage, minimum side yard setback, maximum building height. And under 9.4, they're asking for a waiver of the site plan approval and a waiver of the $750 filing fees. As the applicant present. Could you approach the lectern, please, sir, and introduce yourself?
Good evening. My name's Tim Ferment. I'm the executive director for Habitat for Humanity, Metro West, Greater Worcester. We're located in Worcester, Mass. Tonight, we're here to seek a comprehensive permit for the site on Four Homestead. Give you a little bit of history about Habitat first. We've built 40 homes within the area. We've been in existence for the last 25 years. The nature of Habitat is that we help people get homes. You know, our mission is to put God's love into action. We bring people together in order to build homes, community, and hope. And that's what we try to do. So the property in question was donated to us by Bank of America back in 2013. After we got this donation, and Bank of America did this across the country, they had foreclosed properties. And part of throughout the U.S., they donated 2,000-plus properties to Habitat across the USA. We were lucky to be one of those recipients. After we got this property, we approached the town planner, Julie Jacobson, and at that time, Adam, to discuss the possibilities of converting that into affordable housing. At that time, it was very welcoming. It fits within to the master plan, and I think chapter four, I believe, of the master plan that speaks to affordable housing. And these units will count as affordable inventory for the town, which is exactly what I think, you know, Auburn and a lot of towns are seeking. We come in as a 40B developer, and hopefully, a friendly 40B developer. And I say that because we work very closely with DHCD, wanting getting the LIP approval, the local initiative program approval, every other approval, the marketing plan approval. We already got our letter of acceptance that's in front of you, I believe, today. So we work hand insurance and the taxes. So the insurance and taxes are basically a given, and we back into the selling price. The difference between that and fair market value, we take as a silent second that requires no payments, and we do a 0% loan, not to exceed 30 years. So what we have proposed here, this is a residence RA zone, and the existing house was demolished here this past year through the permission of the town. We look to do that because originally, we thought about salvaging that house. The condition wasn't worthy of doing that. And we're also proposing building a duplex on this site. Reason being is that it provides two families a home versus one, and it just doubles our impact upon the community and those in need. So we got a number of exceptions that we're talking about. The existing lot is a 12,000-square-foot lot, 12,375, with 75 foot of frontage. And of course, there was a single-family home on there. So we're looking to subdivide this into two lots, which means that it's a duplex with a zero lot line in between and a common walls to zero. So there's six exceptions, or I guess waivers, that we're asking for tonight that we'll go through. So the two single-family homes are the picture that I put in front of you. That's the artist's rendering. And you can see that we work hard about tying into the community. We think this house is both visually attractive and fitting within a community. And I look for feedback from abutters or anybody else to input in on it. So the house that we build is both handicap accessible. We build it so that it's livable on the first floor and therefore allows aging in place. It'll be built as a passive house, which means that it's net zero to the extent possible. If we put solar on it, it would be a net-zero home. So we bulk up the walls, we increase the insulation, we put in the right type of heat pump units for it. And if it can hold solar, and if we get solar donated to us, we'll put solar on. Right now, in Worcester, the house under construction is a net-zero home, LEED-certified, being built for a wounded veteran. This house will be two families, and it'll be both handicap accessible so we can also accommodate the same. So the, you know, what we submitted so far was the application for the comprehensive permit. We submitted the project site eligibility termination from DHCD, the Town of Selectmen Board of Selectmen's letter of acknowledgement and approval to proceed. We went to them first and foremost up front, and they unanimously agreed for us to proceed. The list of waivers are in Exhibit A that I have attached, et cetera, et cetera. And I think you've already got copies of the site plan to go with that. So the waivers we're looking for are six. Obviously, it's around, you know, we're not going to meet minimum lot size. It's a non-conforming size today on frontage. The lot size is less than 10,000 per square foot for each house. We're looking at subdividing that with a zero lot line, will be 6,000-plus. The frontage, 100 feet of frontage, 75 today, is we put in two, put in one duplex, that means 37.5 for each unit. That's a waiver that we're asking for. The other one is minimum side yard. We're okay on the abutters' side yard, but this being a zero lot line, obviously, between the two lots, there's zero. The maximum building height, not greater than 25. This is a two-story. It's going to be around that, depending upon the basement and the elevation. Really can't speak to what it's going to be exactly, but it's probably going to be in the, you know, low 30s, I would think. The site plan approval is waiver for site plan approval, and then asking also waiver of the filing fee for $750. So I think what we have in front of you, it does meet with the 40B comprehensive permit process coming in front of you to ask for the waivers. I think it fits well into the master plan. It fits well into affordable housing that I think we're all trying to achieve. You know, Habitat's reputation is important, and we work with the community. This will be a community build. We started zero on fundraising, already got funds started. We got an FHLB, Federal Home Loan Bank, grant for $50,000 already at this point. You know, but the rest of the fundraising, we anticipate this project's about a $330,000 project with the two of them. Putting in a basement, doing a foundation, building the duplex, little site work to be done. The elevation will stay pretty much what it is today. Our houses don't have garages. We don't supply that with our families, so what you see is basically what we show. You have two site elevations, I think. I think you should have one that shows the existing house. The new house will be set back a little bit further, only to take advantage of a bigger front yard for the families, provide parking off-road, et cetera, and then a nice-sized backyard. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Great, thank you. Mr. Cuzzi?
Yeah. So the people own these houses? They buy them?
They buy them. They take a mortgage with us. We're the mortgage holder. We're the bank. So it's a 0% loan, no more than 30 years, but they're the owners. They can't rent them. They may, they must use it as their primary residence.
Okay. Now, can they resell these at their own will?
No, we put a restrictive covenant on it. So there's a deed rider that both us, DHCD, and the town can be a monitoring agent. If they sell, we have the right of first refusal. We build into the deed rider a shared equity appreciation model, so they get some appreciation if there is. We have our silent second that gets paid off first, so they can benefit by the lower price and turn around to my own salad.
Okay. Good for them.
Mr. Chacola?
I would like to reserve my questions and comments until it appears that we have some abutters here, until I hear the abutters speak.
Mr. Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The relief that's being requested specifically speaks to size for this lot. So I'd like to ask our building inspector if there is any, from a state level, requirements that have either already been satisfied for this application?
Yeah, they have to apply, they have to apply to the state before they come before you.
Okay.
So they have to meet the state requirement, minimum requirements for the size, and they've met those.
So they, so by virtue of them being here, they would have met the state requirements?
Correct.
For the size of what they're going to construct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I do have other questions, but I would like to hold them until we hear from the abutters. Thank you very much.
Just one question. Assuming everything goes forward perfectly through from today forward, when do you expect a completion date?
Normally, it takes us a year to complete a house. Depends upon when we get into the ground, and when permits are achieved, we got still DHCD to go through, which means that there's agreements with DHCD that need to be completed after this. Most importantly, the marketing plan. The marketing plan then goes into effect and allows us to advertise the house for sale. We have yet to complete plans subject to today, so we still got to finish plans, go in front of the, getting a building permit, et cetera. So I'd say there's probably a year and a half before that house gets finished realistically.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm also going to wave until I hear the abutters. So I take we have some abutters present, whenever they care to speak. I need you, if you're going to speak, sir, if you go up to introduce yourself.
Do you want each of us to go up there?
If you all have some comment to input, yes, absolutely. I'd like to hear from each of you in order.
Will we go together or one at a time?
One at a time, please. Can you introduce yourself, please, sir?
Yeah, I'm Doug Duches. I live at Five Homestead Ave. And I really don't object to a house being there. It's a, it's basically a single-family area. The, the road where it hits Oxford Street is real narrow there. And at the other end, we got the church, so we got a maximum amount of traffic from time to time. And I think having, you know, two units there is just going to increase the traffic on an already narrow road. That'd be one of my concerns. And I don't know what it would do to my property value, to be truthful with you. Other than that, it's, you know, a single family would be fine as far as I'm concerned. I think a duplex a little out of. Well, like I said, it's a narrow area. Now, as that Homestead Ave goes down to Oxford Street, it's real congested. You've got a lot of school bus traffic during the school time, and that road's already used quite a bit as a cut-through. You know, you'd be a lot more traffic concerns, and that's about it that I can think of.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
If you introduce yourself, please, ma'am?
Yes, it's Christina Duches, and I have the same concerns with my, as my husband. What I'm concerned also is just the traffic and the, you know, with two, it was a single-family home prior, and why they decided to put a duplex. I just, I am totally against it. I think it will decrease the value of everyone's home on, on the street, and not to mention the extra traffic and the congestion that's going to occur. I don't even know where these people are going to park. I mean, this is a small lot, there's not a lot of frontage. What is it, 75 feet? I just, I don't know. We all have concerns, and it's just not us that came. There's the rest of the street around the area, three Homestead Ave, one Homestead Ave. We're from five. My mother-in-law's from seven. So we all have the same concerns. We're not opposed to a single-family home, but, you know, it is our neighborhood, and we've been living here for 20 years, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Through the chair. I'm just going to put this out so the abutters can.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Craig and Christine LaFrance. We live at Six Homestead Ave, the lot directly.
Right next.
Next to Four Homestead Ave. And according to this plan, this property line is no, is.
Very just.
It's a very deceiving property line. The property line is basically on top of our house as it is. It might be 10 feet at the most.
Where they're showing the tree versus the side of our house between is much closer. And if they're going to put a duplex and two driveways.
They're going to try to maximize space. They're going to be right on top of us.
And then two stories high, it's going to be right on top of us. You know, when we bought our property, the people who renovated the house before us were told they couldn't build to the side towards that property because it was too close. Now, we have, you know, this being okay to build a duplex closer to our side doesn't make sense. And like I'm saying, this is.
This is very deceiving.
Looking at this, it's very deceiving. If you came to the house, you would see it's going to be pretty much on top of us. And with windows to windows, you know, we didn't buy our property thinking that there was going to be a two duplex built like that. And, and then two driveways, and, you know, it just, I, again, this is very deceiving. Like I said, one family would be, I think, fine. Again, there was one family there. We had no problems with property lines, but according to this plan here, it looks like it's going to be right on top of us. They're making it look like our house is a lot further away than it is.
Like 40 feet away from the property line. It's not, it's right there.
Do you have an estimate about how far your house is actually from the property line?
Maybe 10, 10 feet at the most.
It's, it's, there's bushes between it, and that's about it, and maybe 10 feet, you know, from the bushes.
Because I can see, as I'm looking at this plan here, it does present your house as being sort of to the left side of your property.
Honestly, it's not. If you can buy it, you could literally, bushes separate it, and then there's like 10 feet to our bushes that are against our house.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, may I ask, if you, would you mind coming up on my drawing and trip? Because I did actually view the lot, and I want to make sure that I have your house in my mind and not a different.
That's okay. So this here, this is a, this is like a pine tree here, and there's all bushes here.
And this is you?
This is us.
Okay.
And literally, there's bushes here, but it's literally from this tree to the bushes, it's probably more here.
Okay. I did, I did view the property.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that I was looking. Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at Seven Homestead Ave. I just have a question about how are the applicants chosen? If you could answer that.
I certainly can't answer that question, but I'm sure that gentleman can. So if you don't mind him stepping up for a minute to the microphone, he can answer that question for you.
Okay.
Yeah, the applicants go through a very long family selection process. Applications are sent into our office. We need to act on them within a certain period of time. We got a family selection committee that reviews them, reviews them based upon need, the ability to pay, and the willingness to partner with Habitat. So that means they must be creditworthy. We're holding a mortgage on that. They got the ability to pay. The willingness to partner is that they represent Habitat, where they're partners forever at that house. We help them in situations. We make sure they're good neighbors, et cetera. We visit their houses, interview them within their location, talk to their landlords and/or abutters. They're representing us, and this is a very special situation. You know, we're a hand up, not a hand out. We don't give out our houses for free. We help people that are on a cusp of moving up, that have not owned a home before but need that ability. So it's a very rigid program. And then at the end, in this case, it'll go to lottery, where the approved applicants will be put into a pool. DHCD guidelines dictate how that lottery is drawn, and then it's also signed off by our board.
I'm sorry, can you say the last one again? Signed off by what?
By our board of directors.
Oh, thank you, okay.
Yes.
So being a mortgage, you hold the mortgage?
Yes.
So you view the property once a month, or you go by and make sure they're kept up?
Well, we are constantly in contact with them. We got a family service partner, and we put together a family partner who works with them. We don't necessarily visit monthly. As a bank, I don't think you want your bank coming in every month.
No.
But we're in contact with those individuals. We're engaging them and within a community. The family partner is there to talk to them. If there's a neighbor issue, we're the first to hear and the first to respond to that family. So that, you know, occasionally may happen. We're there. If a family continues to have a problem and doesn't pay or has other issues, that's part of their partnership agreement with us, to stay in good standing. So they could lose their house down the road. We take back houses deed in lieu of. Doesn't happen that often because of our selection process, but it's there. So it's not unusual for me to call a family. We're working with that in Sudbury. We're cleaning, working with Sudbury. The landscaping wasn't done right. It was left au naturel, and that's what it looked like after five years. We're back in there now re-landscaping. You know, so we're constantly in a community. We're going to come back to Auburn again in the future. This won't be our only Habitat build within Auburn, hopefully. And, you know, we, we're constantly out with representing 42 communities, so we stay involved. I think to address, one of the other questions came up was about fair market value. You know, we're going to be putting in a $300,000 investment, $330,000 investment. Our house is appraised very well. In most, all the recent cases, our house, houses are worth as much, if not more than some of the neighborhood houses, because of what we're building in. You know, it's a net-zero house. It's today, it's, you know, the look, the condition of the house. This is a well-kept house. We make sure it ties into the community. Right now, we got two duplexes under construction in Wayland with three and a half acres. They donated to Habitat and CPA money to go with it. You know, so we go through rigid requirements. Sudbury, the same way. Worcester, that we just built on Plantation Street. We're working with Worcester Academy to build one right outside the entrance to Worcester Academy. They're giving us the house. We're working with the city on block grant money. You know, so we're constantly out there and, you know, very proud of our houses. If anything, we're trying to make them more cosmetically pleasing, not the plain Jane. So the one that we're building across from Holy Cross, you know, has a little bit extra trim work. You know, we put on thicker wood, so even though it's a basic house on the inside, the outside doesn't need to look vanilla. So that's how we build. And I think if you see this house, you know, this shows our intent about the aesthetics of the house, that it's a very pleasing look. I think the other question was about the closeness to the abutters. If you check on our site plan, we've outlined the building lot setbacks. We meet the setback requirements. I can't speak to the drawing. You know, Waterman Design did the drawings for us. They did that piece. Can't speak to that if it is closer. I don't know that. I just know that on our property line, we meet the setback requirements. So by zoning, it meets the requirements, and by comprehensive permit, it meets the, you know, meets the need.
By zoning, it meets the requirements? Can you explain that?
Sure. On the setback requirements, the side setbacks are not asked for a waiver. They meet the zoning requirement.
On a state level?
And on a local level as well. On a local level, they meet building code requirements. Otherwise, it would be in there as an exception.
You've, you've, excuse me, you've stated that you meet those setback requirements?
Except for.
What is the number that you come up with?
Yes.
What is the number that you?
Oh, what is the number? Not sure. I don't have the drawing here in front of me.
That's the other house. That's the former house.
Yeah, I got the smaller drawing only, and my eyes won't allow me to see that small. But they are marked, that dotted outline is the required be within that perimeter. So the dotted outline on the plan does show the zoning setbacks. I can't speak to exactly what it is. The only place that doesn't meet that are the two units theirself, of course, have a zero lot line setback.
If I may add, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
The minimum side yard setback is 10 feet on both side yards. And they're able to encroach on one of those side yard setback within the zoning bylaw. The side closest to Six Homestead, that side, that building does not encroach within a 10-foot setback, is actually about 12, maybe 13 feet outside that side yard setback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that's got?
If you look at the existing building that was there, and how it fits within that dotted line, our building is pretty much conforming to the same of that, maybe a little bit closer on the sides, but not much. So I think, you know, both from setbacks, the waivers that we're asking for are six. I think the question about duplex versus single, you know, is a question. I think duplex is what we're requesting. Putting two homes or two families within that maximizes that, still with an attractive use, still permitted by your approval, comprehensive permit. So it is something that makes sense for the site. It does fit into that site very well, and, you know, it's, it's still going to be a very beautiful house that sits there. The parking is intentionally set back from the street. That's why we pushed the house back a little bit, to make it more reasonable, so you can't have off-street parking.
Do I have any further input from the abutters? Yes, ma'am. Yes, please.
Again, my name is Christina Duches. I have a question now. After you select the potential people that will be living in these houses, if it goes through for two houses, and I know that they are supposed to be able to pay whatever the percentage is, what did you say, 20 to 60% of their mortgage or whatever?
30% of their mortgage.
Okay. And you say how nice these houses are going to look and all. Who actually maintains them? And how, what if these people that you choose don't keep anything up? Like, who watches over that? I mean, we're the ones that are going to be living next to these people, whoever they, whoever you choose. You know, I have a concern with that, too. How does that work? If you could just let us know how that goes? What if they're, they don't keep anything up, and then it looks like a dump? You know, I have a question about that.
Yeah, I think the first part of question talked about the mortgage percent. So we deal with a population that earns 20 to 60% of the average median income. You know, that's our guideline as far as the selection of families, and that's within the DHCD guidelines. They go up to 80% of average median income. When we select a family, 30% of their income is what we calculate as being set aside for housing cost. And those housing costs are the mortgage, the insurance, and the taxes. So the insurance is given. It's $1,200 per unit. Taxes are going to be whatever the assessment we think's going to be, and we know what the tax rate is. And then it comes down to their mortgage on that. So when we approve a family, they're very creditworthy. So when we approve a family, they're very creditworthy. They have money, they have income, and they're just like any other first-time homeowner. They have money in their pocket and they have pride of ownership as well. I think our houses are very well-maintained. If you drive around and see the 40 habitat houses and somebody says it's on this street, you wouldn't be able to pick it out. It looks like every other house on the street. You know, anybody runs risk with, does your neighbor maintain their lot? You know, I could move in and be a bad homeowner. That doesn't mean because of my money or wealth. I think our families are very respectful of what they get and the opportunity they have. If there is a situation where something happens, we're a phone call away. So you can call us in Worcester and say, they got a boat parked out front and it's been, you know, crippled or whatever. We react to that. So unlike another neighbor that could move in, that you could have no contact with, in this case, you have us as an in-between. You know, so that's a plus as a neighbor. So we're there. We do drive around our sites. We know our sites where they are. We don't bother our families and tell them. But anybody can buy a house and let it go into disrepair. I'm very confident of our family homeowners. The selection process is pretty tight. And we're there as a partner forever. We're there as a relationship. The monitoring agreement between us, DHCD, and the town gives us assurance that the monitoring can go on. That's built into the agreement. There's a deed rider about their house. So they don't want to lose their house, just like anybody else doesn't want to lose their house. That's not what they're there for. They're like any other family trying to build up equity in today's marketplace.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any further comment from anyone in this place?
Chairman, I have some questions for the applicant, if all of the abutters are gone.
It appears so.
What I'm looking at for your waiver, if I'm looking at, let's, I'm going to take them in order. Number one, what I'm looking at there would amount to a variance in the size of a lot. And what I'm going to be looking for from you is some help here. In order to grant that permission, I need you to make a case for me why the size of that lot creates a hardship.
I think the size of the lot that's 12...
The topology of the lot, excuse me.
Yeah.
Why the topology of the lot creates a hardship because size is not legitimate.
Topology does not create a hardship.
Pardon?
Topology or the lot itself does not create a hardship. This is only a matter of putting a duplex where a single was involved before. Therefore, the request for the waiver, this is a matter of meeting affordable housing requirements as far as trying to get percentage up and get affordable housing in. When you got the ability to put in two houses and meet the setback requirements and meet other requirements, it's an opportunity for both us and you.
But, but what I'm, what it does not meet is the requirements for square footage of a lot. And therefore, in order to grant you relief for that, we would need you to make a case, my feeling is you would need to make the case where the topology, as referenced in law, the topology would need to create a hardship in order for you to get relief from the square footage size for a two-family. So that's what I'm looking for from you. I need some help here from you to grant, okay? And I can see Mr. Benoit has got his hand up a bit here.
I do.
So maybe you want to let him try to answer.
I think he can because it does speak to 40B.
Sure. Sorry, I apologize. I don't mean to answer it.
To get all the information.
Because this is a comprehensive permit application through Chapter 40B, this isn't susceptible to such variance as laws as hardships. There's only three things we're looking at here as the permit granting authority for this comprehensive permit. And that is, we're looking to, you can either deny this based on a safety issue.
Based on what?
Based on a public safety issue.
Yeah.
An environmental concern. And if you have over 10% of your subsidized housing inventory in the town of Auburn already, that's all.
And for the record, we're at about 6%.
We're at 3.5%.
Oh, okay, 3.5%.
So what you're telling me is?
Yes.
That in no way, shape, form does anybody who comes here and wants to put in 40B housing have to conform to existing zoning bylaws.
Correct.
They are exempt.
Because...
Existing zoning bylaws. I could put a three-family on that lot if I wanted.
Yes, and just as an example...
Doesn't seem, common sense tells me that's not right.
I understand. Mr. Cussey, I believe you were here for the Kateri Tecagwitta Wyoming Drive 40B project that happened earlier, 2008. I don't know if you were still an alternate member at that time, but at that time, they had requested 11 waivers. One of them was to waive the 12-unit limitation to allow the 30-unit multifamily building on that site. They also waived the height requirement, square footage requirement of the lot was only 10,000 square feet. There, all of these were granted because of the comprehensive permit requirements of Chapter 40B. The, if the board was leaning towards reasons for denial of a comprehensive permit under 40B, it has to cite one of those three reasons I mentioned earlier, primarily because if this were to go to a housing appeals court, if the applicant were to appeal the decision from the zoning board, it would be upheld in the applicant's favor only because, primarily because, we do not meet the 10% subsidized housing inventory, period. So...
Could you enumerate those three reasons again, please?
For public safety, environmental concern, and the 10% subsidized housing inventory requirement. So this is, it's a lot different than a special permit. I understand your concerns are very valid for most special permit variants.
My concerns are, and I need to, I feel I need to voice them openly, is that there is, why are we even sitting here? Why would we even sit here, bring these people out and have them come up because they are concerned, because there is an impact that they feel, an exponential impact that they feel?
Certainly.
Why would we even spend our time sitting here if it was not needed because any of these bylaws get put aside because of 40B?
Right.
And I'm, believe me, I want to tell you, I am not against 40B or affordable housing, whatever you want to call it, okay? Far from against it in the proper perspective, within its proper perspective. But why are we even sitting here then?
Because Chapter 40B law through the chair requires the zoning board of Appeals to be the special permit.
So we're required to say, we don't have anything to say about it?
No, sir.
We can't say yes, we can't say no, just put a rubber stamp on it?
No, sir. There are three options that you can have. You can either approve the application as it's presented today.
Right.
You can approve it with conditions, or you can deny the application.
And, and the conditions that you would set forth, because you've enumerated reasons for denial, what would you enumerate as conditions that could be put on it?
As a, since I'm not a board member, I don't think it would be proper for me to propose that.
Is not meeting, is not meeting any one of the zoning bylaws that everybody else in this town has to meet. Is that proper?
This is a comprehensive special permit. It's not a special permit. It's a comprehensive permit.
I see.
So they don't have to follow the procedure.
So we're not going to call it a variance on any one of these things. We're going to call it a comprehensive permit.
Correct. In order to apply for...
Because we're calling it that, okay? All, everybody else, me included, you included, the applicant included?
Right.
Has to meet the requirements of the zoning bylaws.
Right.
But because we're calling it a comprehensive permit, we can put those zoning bylaws aside.
It's not...
Take out our rubber stamps.
It's not easy to apply for a comprehensive permit. It's not something any applicant can just come forth and apply for. You have to have this approval letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development in order to apply for such permit.
The point is, it's, you can do it. And once it's done, the bylaws that a town has and put in place to safeguard its own community and for the benefit of its own townspeople, those are just thrown out the window. And I apologize, and I can, I'll get off my soapbox right now. I apologize.
And that's all right.
Reason being primarily is simply the subsidized housing inventory requirement. Because we're under that 10%, we are at the mercy of the rules of this rule.
I'm sorry, ma'am. If you're going to speak, you need to go up, back up to the lectern, please.
So you invite us here with a letter to speak our minds and we, it doesn't matter what we say, this gets approved no matter what, is what you're saying?
Well, in order to maintain the integrity of the process, we have to notify you as abutters. That is the requirement of the town, it's requirement of the law in general. Basically, this is also a medium understanding so we can get it out on the table and explain to people how it actually works. Unfortunately, in these cases that, yes, our hands are tied, with the exception of being able to put special requirements attached to this comprehensive permit. And that might be something that he may already cover, handicap, accessible bathrooms, or a particular setback on the lot, different things like that. We can't fundamentally, because keep in mind, we are a local authority, the state wrote the 40B law and therefore overrides our authority. So even though we believe as a town, these are the requirements that we find acceptable in our community because 40B is adopted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, then in theory, yes, we have nothing we can really do about it except for, again, as Mr. Benoit pointed out, has to be a public safety issue. I'm sorry, the other two were again a little lost.
Environmental concern.
I'm sorry.
An environmental concern. And the subsidized housing.
And subsidized housing requirement. So if we had 10% of the community already in subsidized housing...
Their driveway is going to be right on our front lawn and their bedroom, like theirs is going to be right on top of us. And it's nothing we can say about it.
Unfortunately, ma'am.
That, that's not what they're proposing.
So, they're parking on my front lawn and my kids run around. That's not a safety issue.
Okay, hold on one second. So we try to maintain decorum here, okay? So I know you're upset and I respect that, but you have to understand, we can answer your questions as well. Requirements of the setbacks are 10 feet from the property line. And according to his plan, submitted and accepted, each unit is 10 feet from the property.
The driveway doesn't really look...
Well, driveways are not required to be 10 feet from the property.
Okay, but again, but that's my property line was where my kids are going to be running around.
Mm-hmm.
And they're driving onto less than 10 feet from my property.
Mm-hmm.
And we were told, again, like he's saying, if I was to put a driveway, again, the people who renovated the house before we moved in were told we couldn't build closer to that house. They wanted to put a garage on the other side. They couldn't do that. And again, it's because of what he said, we don't have that special zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Because it was going to be too close to their, their house.
Right.
So again, it just doesn't make sense.
And I understand, but for the record, a garage is seven feet from the property line. So if they had seven feet from the property line, I'm not sure who told them. I wasn't there to measure it, nor I was there to have the conversation, but the bylaw states a garage can go up seven feet from the property line.
But again, I'm just saying, this is, again, it's wasting our time.
And I see that you're frustrated and I respect that.
And, you know, again, we don't mind a single family because, again, it's, when you look at this property, this lot is not that big. It's going to, you're going to have this ginormous duplex in this tiny little lot amongst these single-family homes. And you're going to have, you know, two-family, you have a duplex with these two families. How many people are going to be living in that two-family with how many cars?
Mm-hmm.
And again, like he says, you come down that, that little steep, you have people parking on the side of the road so many times, school buses would come up, there's so many types of accidents happening just without a house there right now. Now you're going to have two families with, again, you don't know how many cars. They could be moving in with teenagers that have cars, two adults that have cars, they could have four cars on each side. So how many cars are going down that little, that's a safety issue. School buses, you try going up and down that street, turning that corner with it being literally enough for one car coming down. That's a safety issue for us every day. But you guys don't see that. He doesn't see that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do see that.
You know?
Okay. I was there, I viewed the property, okay?
I was there also.
So it's, that's, we do it every day.
Tend to visit them.
My daughter just got her permit. She's afraid to come up that road, just, you know, she goes all the way around. She even knows, just being in a passenger, going up that, she, you know, turning up homestead off of Oxford Street, how dangerous it is. And now putting two parking, you know, two driveways with, again, we don't know how many cars. That's just going to add to the traffic. So for us, that's a safety issue. You know, it's just, it's what we see every day. And now, again, that was with one single house there. And now, even without that there, we see it. So again, you know, that's a safety issue for us. We have concerns. And for us to be brought here and not to be heard is just, again, I don't understand why. Why it doesn't matter. And I know you're saying it's a state thing, but I don't think it's fair at all. Because again, we have kids, there's a school, there's, that's at the church, the school buses go up and down every day. It's a concern. So it's not just me, it's the neighbors. And there's kids that live across the street in the other houses as well. It's not just my kids.
Mm-hmm.
But, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
There is also no sidewalks on either side of the, of the road. So people have, who are walking, have to walk right in the street. And it's already narrow. And now you're going to have two more driveways with people backing up or cars parked in the road. I, I think that's a safety concern for everyone. There's people that walk their dogs, there's children walking up and down the street. There's no sidewalks for any, any of us to actually walk up and down the street on. So I don't know if anyone took into that into consideration, too. So I don't know. I just find it very unfair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may...
I may, please.
I'd like to go back to a couple of the questions that I, I had. And certainly not delaying if there's any additional public comment. I don't want to cut anyone short. Mr. Ferment, am I?
Ferment.
Ferment, okay, thank you. I listened very intently to your, your opening and I appreciate very much the service that you're trying to provide. I think that you were very thoughtful and I also learned a lot tonight. And, and of course, with the gentleman here, I also learned a lot on the legislative side of our capabilities. I think that, given, given the notion that, and I firmly believe you are extremely thoughtful in your approach, that you can appreciate the challenges that not only our community, I would suspect that our community is, is not unique and that you've attended similar discussions in your position. And I, I want to appreciate that and, and the thoughtful manner that you've, you've carried your comments. I would like to come back to a couple of things that I took note in your opening statements regarding building what fits. Because I do think that the language that you used was very purposeful and I think that you, you really chose those. I viewed the property and that's why it took certainly some experts to help me wrap my head around some of these numbers. And I called upon them and again, I've learned more tonight. I'd like, if I may, to ask you to consider this neighborhood and the location and, and that lot specifically. And what was there previously and the comments that we've heard tonight? I would, I would share, not from a personal perspective, but from a community perspective, that I would tell you succinctly through, through the chair, that I do have concerns about two units in that location. From an aesthetic perspective, and I know that that's not what driving, I think earnestly what's driving your decision is to help as many families as possible. And I heard that very succinctly and I appreciate that approach. I also heard that your organization as a whole really approaches these decisions from a community perspective, not only for the folks that are going to reside there, but the ones that already reside there. So I would ask in, in your approach that you consider a single-family home there. Because in my view, I do believe that that lot and that neighborhood, that is what fits. And again, this is just one guy on the board talking, but build what fits is, I think, part of your remit, part of your organization's remit. I think that it's in contrast to trying to put as many units as possible. I think that it's in contrast to trying to put as many units as possible. I think that there are some lots that would afford that. I personally don't believe that based on the neighborhood, based on the location, based on the size, based on the neighbors, on, and I viewed each and every house, up and down, I wasn't spying, but, but it's part of why, as, as a volunteer board, we, we earnestly look to the community. I heard that in your opening comments, I, I believe that you're vested in that directly. I would, I would respectfully request that you consider that in your ultimate decision. I understand what's driving, more is better, but I think for this location and that lot size, I really am challenged with wrapping my head around two families versus one for that lot. And I think that it's counterintuitive, just in my humble opinion, to some of the comments that you shared about what truly fits in that location. And I, I would ask, feel free to respond, feel free to ignore it, that's just my thought. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, will say.
Yeah, let me respond with some thinking. If you look at this house, the footprint is a much different, wider than the footprint that was there. If you compare the existing single-family to the duplex, if you look at the height, the building to the right of us, I'm not sure how many families are in there, but there's quite a few in the two-story colonial to our right. So pretty big building, with multiple tenants that were parking on our lot when it was abandoned. So I think from that issue, this house, one, footprint-wise fits well, and the looks of that house fits in very well to the neighborhood. I think it's not rare that you find a butters that have concern about not in my backyard, that's common. I think if you talk to Auburn about affordable housing in your broader community, you would see a, quite a cry-out for affordable housing. You built it into your master plan. So somewhere there, we all need to step up to the table. We got a crisis on affordable housing, it's a statewide crisis. So, as we start to compromise on site to site, and I don't think, if I thought this was way out of line, I'd be agreeing with you. My personal opinion is that it fits, neighbors next door may think otherwise, it's a personal opinion. What it really comes down to is, does it fit? Does it meet the guidelines? Does it serve the community? Does it serve affordable housing? Does it afford, does it serve DHCD in, in the bigger picture? And often, I gotta step back and look at the bigger picture. You know, if it was not a 40B, then you're subject to special permit, and I think that's a legitimate issue, 40B is a, you know, slippery animal. But it is what it is, and it does give you the ability. I wouldn't feel right compromising this by going to a single-family. I think it'd be short-sighting the site and the community from the opportunity that exists there to do the right thing, and that's, you know, that's my opinion, that the right thing's a duplex. And that, that's always a tough call. You know, if I go over to Plantation Street, it's a duplex, if I go to Wayland, it's two duplexes. If I go to Edna Street, across from Worcester Academy, it's a duplex, right across from Worcester Academy. Of course, it's in a neighborhood of, you know, triple-deckers, but it's a, it's a very visible spot to the academy, and they're welcoming in that opportunity. The city of Worcester was city block grant money, you know, the same way. So, you know, I think our mission has to address the bigger need, and I hear you about trying to, if I thought it was way out of line, I'd be talking differently. And, you know, we went through this with, as we walked through the different channels, when I first talked to the Board of Selectmen, it was described as a duplex, right off the bat. We thought we can take that existing building and build on top of it, that was our intent, but the building integrity didn't allow for it. So from day one, within the community, this has been proposed as a duplex, this isn't, you know, something new tonight. I hear you, but I professionally disagree.
Well, thank you very much for your, for your response and your comments, and, and I would, I would ask through the chair that we can, we can certainly agree to disagree. But, but I thank you for your response.
Sure, thank you.
So I've reserved my comment, one of the things I have a concern with is, you mentioned Plantation Street, a couple of other places, excuse me, Worcester Academy, in fact, where a lot of those houses there are already multifamily homes, especially in the Vernon Hill area, where it's well-known as the hill of three-deckers. So a duplex comparing those two is sort of comparing apples and oranges.
Sure.
So that's one of the concerns I have. The other one, if I stand alone and look at this property, and I know we cannot apply it particularly to this situation, this would not pass, it's not even close. The lot size, the requirements, and everything else, and it's unfortunate for you folks to have to sit here, be subjected, subjected to this under a law that we have no control over. The other two items I have is, you have not been able to address the height requirement, and we were very strict about our height requirements in town as well. As a matter of fact, at one point, we restricted the building of a police station on Route 12 many years ago, because it could only be one story and not two. And the one question I do have for you, Mr. Benoit, if you may, please, when I'm reading the chapter on the site plan approval, I'm not comfortable with the wording that we have here, can we actually waive the site plan approval? Because from what I can understand here, it still needs to go to the planning board as well.
No, you can waive.
We can waive based on the 40B?
You can waive site plan approval even at a local level.
Right, okay. I just wanna make sure, the way I interpreted it, read it, I just wanna make sure it was clear, so, okay, thank you. So with that being said, I'm just asking if there's any more perm input before I move this hearing forward. Hearing none, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any further discussion for the board members?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the open comment for the purposes of, of my colleagues here, that succinctly, I, I, I find myself, I find the board in a, almost a, a very precarious situation, whereby I don't think that we have the latitude to exercise the judgment. And you know what, and I'll, I'll just speak for myself, I don't have the latitude, I believe, to exercise the judgment that I'd like to, that I'd like to apply to this, to this vote. And so, I will rely on the, the guidance that we've been given regarding the law, but I would, I would like that in the record, that I just, I think that, that these hearings play a very important role in giving our community an opportunity to voice their opinions and their concerns. This is an area in the law that restricts us in such a way that, in my humble opinion, does a disservice to this process. But having stated that, I think that we have a job to do based on the law.
And I agree with you, but if you read through the package of the 40B information, also, if we do choose to refuse it, the applicant does have an appeal process, which would be involved going into the, as Mr. Benoit said, basically going to housing court, more than likely receiving the approval and the project.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I did, I did review that, and I tried my earnest to, not, certainly not an attorney, but I tried my earnest to try to play that out. My concerns, this is just one of five talking, but my concerns are that if we reasonably play out the actions here, my hope would be that we would spare the town the cost of going through that process. And that's why I, I'm, I'm concerned about our ability to exercise what I feel is, is my own, my own judgment in this case, but, but quite frankly, I would, I would prefer to spare the town any additional cost in that process.
And, and I agree with you, and also, the one thing that the butters brought up that I found interesting was the question of traffic safety, and I'm not necessarily sure that that actually fits into the requirements of what would be defined as safety in a court of law. Because we all drive our cars on the streets, all of our children drive on the streets, the sidewalks are not there because they have not been there for years. Unfortunately, it's a great argument, but I just don't think it would stand up in court.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chacolo, no, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I, so I had my, viscerally, I had the same exact thought, and I, I, I held comments around that because I felt as though if we view this for, in any property's sake, I, where I, I'm fortunate to raise my family, there are some sections of sidewalks and some sections of absolute, I tell walkers to make sure they're walking their dogs and their kids on my front lawn, because there's no sidewalk, and so it's a, it's a safety concern that I think replicates throughout town. So I don't know, I, I, I don't think that there's a strong case there, unfortunately.
I feel that for the future, Mr. Furman's gonna be back, obviously, there's gonna be more to come, and he understands how we feel, and when he comes to a site, he'll use his best, you know, to comply with what we, we're looking for. This is tough for the neighbors, that's all, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chacolo, please.
I agree with what my colleague, Mr. Maron, said. That we are, and because of what I've said earlier, I hope everybody here knows that I am in no way, shape, or form against 40B. In this particular case, it would not fly, as far as I'm concerned, I am against it, but our hands are tied unless we wanna put the town through the cost of another, of a frivolous lawsuit. However, if this is to be approved at this level, would absolutely vote against waiving the site plan approval, which would merely provide another level of watchfulness over this. This would then, would this then have to go to, if we choose not to approve waiving of the site plan, will this have to go to the planning board?
I'll get back to you on that in one second.
Well, I think I can ask that question twofold, actually. Could we opt to not approve one or two sections of this permit application at this level go forward? Or B, could we make it a requirement of the permit to still go before the planning board? Instead of choosing not to deny, can we add it as a condition of permit?
You may.
I think that may be the course of action.
Right.
And, and as part of that question, if we choose not to approve one of the six conditions, does that negate being this is put under a comprehensive permit? That means that the comprehensive permit cannot be granted if we choose to hold off on one. Is it an all or nothing permit?
Still trying to address your first question, apologize. I'm still trying to address your first question.
First question was.
Site plan approval.
Essentially, what are the ramifications if we choose to attach the fact that we are not waiving the site plan approval? Which is our right to do?
I'm struggling to find where site plan approval is even required.
As am I.
It's not a section, it's not a requirement of the table of principal uses, so I don't believe this waiver.
They are asking for relief from it?
I don't believe they need it.
I didn't think so either, that's why I asked for clarity.
I think it's supplement to any special permit requirement, but I don't believe it's required.
I didn't think so either.
Use doesn't require it.
Is it our position, if, if they have gone through and, with the state and so forth, gone through and determined what they've needed to be in this comprehensive permit, and that is listed as one of the things they need, we're gonna be relying on your interpretation that they don't need it anyways?
These waiver requests came after they received approval from the state. These are based on interpretation of local regulations after they received 40B approval. So this is their interpretations of what they thought they needed for the bylaw, not ours.
Not ours, correct.
And I'm, Caleb and I are relaying to the board now that we don't believe that site plan approval is even necessary.
So, in this particular situation, that one, there's no conditions we could put on it, that I can see?
The only conditions, again, that we could put on it is similar to what we've done in the past, where if we require, again, hard-wired heat and smoke detectors, you can require handicap accessible bathrooms, but again, they already, this is basically built into the.
That's our private building code.
Correct, it's already in. So really, again, I, I agree with two distinguished colleagues that I don't think they need site plan approval either, based on what I've read today and what I've reviewed the last few days. So even if we wanted to put a conditional requirement of site plan approval on it, if they objected to it, it probably wouldn't stand with the planning board regardless.
So you see no reason why they shouldn't put a six-family on the lot then?
It's frustrating, I understand, but.
Oh, he's being...
Does I have a comment?
Yes, please, of course you can.
So, it looks like this plan is going through, you know, nothing that we can do to stop it. So I just wanna keep in mind, the butters, keep in mind what, what the property looked like before, we all saw the pictures of that, what it looks like now, and what it's going to look like. It is going to be a nice home, nice area there, you know, as opposed to what's there now. The, the, you can't guarantee who's gonna move in next to you, so, you know, the process for, have to have for humanity is a rigorous one, and, you know, I've had the pleasure of working with you before, not you personally, but with the committee, so I appreciate all you do to put into picking the families. So, going forward, I think, you know, it's the best option that we have right now, accepting you.
Thank you.
If I may, through the chair?
Yes, please.
Some of the conditions that the board is able to put on these 40B applications, height, density, site plan, utility improvements, long-term affordability, towns can require that up to 70% of the units are offered to local residents, just some examples of some of the conditions that are, that you have the right to put on. Thank you.
Can you, can you clarify density?
I think some of these refer more to larger projects.
That's what I thought is also, so if we're talking 150, 160 units, we can cut it down to 140, as, as you see the County of Shrewsbury doing right now, as a matter of fact.
Right. I just wanted to give some examples of what you, what you're able to put on as far as conditions, or height is one of them.
And that's where the height would come into play? Where there's a...
By that rationale, through the chair, that does also apply to any total amount of units to support Mr. Maron's point.
I'm sorry, say that again, please?
I think your concern was whether it was two units or one, that same principle applies whether it's a larger or a smaller project. So the board can condition that as it pleases. If they wanted to see one, if they wanted to see five, they can make that condition as part of their approval.
Okay. So with that clarity in mind.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may.
You may, please.
I just wanna clarify that last point, because this is something that through my own study and, and reaching to, and I apologize, as I look at you, I, I think about your first name, Caleb, I apologize, and it leaves me as soon as I, I apologize, Caleb, but the, the thoughtful advice that you had provided, and the expertise both you and Matthew had, excuse me, Mr. Benoit, had provided. To clarify that last point, do we have the authority to limit the number of units on an application?
Sorry, if you don't mind, through the other 40B project initially presented through the chair, through the Ceteri Techic with a project up on Wyoming Drive, they initially proposed 60 units, and the condition of approval reduced to 30, so.
So I'm hearing.
A little bit louder, I, I didn't hear everything you said. Could you repeat that, please?
The original proposal for Ceteri at Wyoming Drive was for 60 units, and it was reduced to 30. So they, to 30.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing, I'm sorry, Mr. Chacolo, if you had a follow-up, what I'm hearing is that if, what I'm hearing is that... What I'm hearing is that if, what I'm hearing is that recognizing size, and this is, this is a one to two versus a 60 to 40. But, Mr. Chairman, if, if our board has the authority to put a condition on that limits the number of units, then I would sincerely make the recommendation that we put a condition in that limits this lot to one unit. With the caveat that before we move forward with that, and I don't know if we could solve this tonight, but I would sincerely like an absolute affirmation that we have the authority to do that. Because if we put that condition on and then it essentially ensues litigation, that is not my intent. I want, I would like to be absolutely clear that if we have the authority to do that, then my recommendation is to do that. If we do not, then certainly take that off the table.
I can answer that if you.
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor.
That may be a question that you'd want to iron out with the applicant. If you have, in this case, the, for Ceteri Techic with the, the applicant was willing to make the reduction.
Well, I, yes, and I, I think that the applicant was clear, as we've closed public hearing, right? So I don't mean to speak of the gentleman in third party. But, but if the applicant, if the applicant was clear that it would not be his intention to reduce this. So I'd like to know if it's in our authority to put that on as a condition.
Within our authority, yes. Could the applicant still appeal?
Yes, exactly. That's where I was going to go. So in other words, they have what they call a friendly 40B process and they also have what they call a hostile 40B process. So he has the option of working with us to find the best solution for all parties concerned. If we deny this process, that's where his appeal process begins and what we refer to at that point as a hostile 40B process. Although I do not agree with either of those two terms, that is generally how they are referred to.
Under service, sir.
We could condition it and he could also appeal it.
Which would automatically put it into the hostile 40B process.
In theory, yes. And therefore, then he doesn't really have to come before the town, doesn't negotiate anymore and he can just move forward with it based on what the state regulations and requirements are.
I, I would, I would submit that that secondary process is absolutely in contrary to everything that he shared with us tonight. Yeah, this applicant is willing to work with the town. This certainly will not, as, as Mr. Cussie had said, this is not the last time that we will work with this gentleman. And so I, I would like to think, taking his comments on merit, that he would sincerely consider that condition and not turn this into a hostile process. By language, not by intent. I, I would, I would ask the board to consider that condition.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, only after absolute clarification of our powers, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chacolo, that's absolutely correct. If we have the authority to make that condition, which I believe that was affirmed.
Through the chair, if that is the concern from the group, you may want to consider reopening the hearing and asking the applicant.
And that's where I was going to go next thing.
Because he could still appeal an approved condition with, an approval with conditions. That can still be appealed if the conditions are not to the applicant's suitability.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I miss, but I think that's excellent advice. And I would, I would ask, Mr. Chairman, if we can have the latitude to open it up and redress that.
A motion to open the hearing, a public hearing, please?
Motion to open, reopen a public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Merron, if you'd like to address the applicant, please.
So if, if, if you would return to the podium. So, Mr. Furman, as we've navigated the scope of our authority, and, and I certainly won't, for the sake of time, rehash my intent, but it's my sincere hope, even after the point-counterpoint dialogue that we shared, that you would consider if we, we put this condition on to limit this site to one unit, that you would consider either accepting or sharing with us your intent to appeal.
Yeah, I don't, there's a number, number of other complications here. One, at DHC D has given us preliminary approval based upon a duplex. So I'm going backwards with DHC D. I think both of us need to talk to our attorneys. I don't think I'm in a position to make that decision until I get some advice. It sounds like we're both in the same boat, being careful about what we want to do. I don't know whether we can continue this hearing.
We certainly can continue it, obviously because we had an issue last week and we canceled.
We brought this one forward to this week.
And I'm not sure about the advertising requirements, if we had to or not, but I would not be opposed to actually coming back next Thursday as well, if this would help iron it out. I can't speak for the other board members, but I would certainly be willing to come back and, and do it again next week if we had to.
Mr. Chairman, so the question of continuance, and I think that, Mr. Furman, that, that offers a great deal of courtesy on your end. I think that we want to be cautious through this. And I have, I have no intention of either suggesting or forcing that this go into a hostile application process.
Right.
I don't think that that's the betterment of, of your process or ours. I know that you have that option succinctly. But I think that what this, certainly this board and, and other boards in the town appreciate your intent. And I'm taking your earlier comments to heart.
Sure.
That, that your intent is to truly work within the community for the goals that you have for these new excited homeowners, but how that impacts the community. I'm asking that, that we truly look at the impact of that community. Not just because of the thoughtful comments of the residents tonight, but because it's, it's, it's where we live, it's our community. Not unique to other discussions you've had. Mr. Chairman, I respectfully would request if, if, Mr. Furman, if you were, weren't opposed to that, that we would explore that option. Because what I'd like to know is, is if we put that condition on, I don't want it to be to the detriment of the town for cost. And I'm not trying to just elongate this process. If, if we're at an impasse and this is what we're working through, then let's approve and move. But if there is an opportunity to continue the discussion of how many units end up in that neighborhood, I'd very much like to do that. With the final thought, Mr. Chairman, next week, I will, as a matter of public record, will actually be in South Africa on an extensive business trip and I will not be able to attend next week. I would very much like to attend. Essentially with, with, you know, a lot of driving some of this discussion, I'd very much like to attend, but I'm not asking the applicant for additional time because of my personal schedule.
I would have as a comment on that, that if we are, if both sides are to consult legal counsel, sometimes seven days is not going to be enough.
That is true.
For them to do that. And again, I'm not looking to drag it out either. But I don't think seven days would be enough time for you to take and seek counsel and for us to seek counsel because there may be some research and phone calls that have to be done. So I, I would say it would have to be a minimum of two weeks. But that puts us into the next cycle where we are here. Can we wait that long?
Well, the issue is here that we're, we're here this evening is because of his time restraints on his application process through the state as well.
But we have satisfied that by being here this evening, right?
Uh, well, I mean, I think that's off of interpretation as well, even though he only has, I believe it's 65 days.
He has 30 days for advertising and the comprehensive permit. We have met that requirement, that's correct.
Right, we've met that requirement.
From here, we could continue to our next meeting, May 21st. It's, there's, that's fine.
So there's no deadlines on his application process then?
That's correct. So long as the applicant agrees to the continuance as well.
So, so I, I would, I would put this decision, Mr. Chairman, back, back in the applicant's hands from, from a matter of courtesy. Because I, I, I'm not trying to delay what would seemingly be an inevitable process. And I, I would want to make sure that he were comfortable with that and working with us, I think, so succinctly. The ask is, can we step from this and confirm if we have the authority to set a condition of number of units for this property? And if the applicant would be willing to either accept or if there would be, and this is, this is again, a request, that, that would you be willing to disclose whether or not if we set that as a condition, if your immediate action would be, would be a, an appeal? Because, because if we have that information upfront, quite frankly, I'm not willing to drag that through an appeal process and that's just me talking. But that, that would be the request.
Yeah, I think it benefits both parties to delay this till the May 21st meeting. I am willing to do that. I can't make a decision at this point without multiple parties weighing in and you as well. So let's do the prudent thing and wait till the 21st, do our homework in between and come back and have the next discussion. I'll take into consideration every point made tonight. That's, you know, what we do. And I got to weigh both sides, as I said earlier, as far as making a decision. But I think it's prudent for us to put and continue the meeting.
Okay. So I think there's a motion to, on the floor, if I may, to a continuance. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close a public hearing.
Well, you're not, sorry, what are, I apologize. You wouldn't be closing it, you'd be continuing.
Uh, well, for the purposes of discussion, right. So, okay, so yeah, motion to continue the public hearing until the May 21st meeting.
Motion to continue?
Correct.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. So that's what we'll do. We'll put you on the agenda for.
And, and again, on, on public record, Mr. Furman, I, I just want to express my appreciation, not only for your earlier comments, but listening tonight and, and giving me an, giving us an opportunity to vet this process. I, I do believe that this is certainly not your first meeting of this sort. And so I appreciate that you come with a certain level of expertise in your positioning, your willingness to take this back and, and vet this regardless of the outcome. I thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion to close a public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Yes, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Do I have a second?
You have another hearing, gentlemen.
We have another hearing.
Apologize. There were two items on the agendas.
I'm sorry?
There were two items on the agenda.
Okay, motion to open the hearing. I can see that.
Take a motion to open.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have to say, I did not receive an agenda that I did not recognize that there was a second hearing.
We actually spoke about this. There was one of them that would lapse its special permit advertising window. If we continued it to May 21st, we pulled it up on the second agenda.
Oh, okay, you're right. I apologize.
It's okay. It all happened so fast, cancellations.
And I will, and also because I thought we had that conversation about the one other applicant that wanted to move forward and we decided that was going to be in.
Correct. Those other two wouldn't lapse the advertising window, so they stayed on for the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a 7:15 coming in very late and I apologize. Applicant Marco Rosa requesting a special permit under section 3250 and 3276 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow the mixed use of an auto body and mobile electronics business at property located at 844 and 844 South Street, Auburn, Mass., map 65, parcel 24, is the applicant present.
Good evening, Mr. Rosa.
Good evening. Could you just give us a brief overview of your intent, please, sir?
Yes, my name is Marcos Rosa and basically what we're trying to do in the town of Auburn is a body shop. It's a business that I was currently in, in the town of Southbridge. And we had to relocate because the place that we were in, they sold to Cumberland Farms. So we had to relocate. We found this great place here in Auburn. So we did, we did research before we was able to go in there. It is approved only by a site plan approval. It's zoned for it. And we went to a DCG meeting, I believe. We sat down with all of them and they suggested us to go and look into a couple of things, which one was mass DEP. We did the research under that. We had people come in the building and spec, give us a report, which we provided. And basically got all the information that was requested to us at that time.
Okay.
And we've submitted everything so far and that's what we're here for.
Okay.
Excuse me, through the chair.
Yes.
Just to clarify, they're looking for approval for the 3276, the auto body use in the Aqua Fire 2 zone.
Right.
Not the retail uses listed there, that's not part of it.
That's not part of the issue, right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That 4351. The Aqua Fire restriction is 4351.
4351. All right, so while you examine that, I'll look up.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may.
Surely.
Through the chair, good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for being so patient this evening. So I tried to find 848, that location. Could you describe to me what's, I'm sorry to be so, so, so granular, but what's next to it? Where is it?
It's right, right after Burger King on Route 20, Southbridge Street. There's mass discount liquors and a dance studio. It's right in that parking lot, in the rear of the dance studio.
Okay. So driving Southbridge Street, I wouldn't have seen the number that way. That makes sense. And I know Burger King well. So, so, okay, that, thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
So is there an, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't mean to begin with questions right away.
Yeah, that's okay. As usual.
Yes, yes, sir.
Procedure.
Absolutely.
Mr. Cussie, do you have any questions to the applicant?
We can pass right now, won't we?
Okay. Mr. Chacolo?
And I will defer to Mr. Merron.
Thank you, gentlemen, and I.
He's on a roll.
I don't, I don't, I don't mean to be so verbose and I certainly want to give my colleagues an opportunity to jump in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if you could, is there existing business there now?
There is.
Okay. And what, what, what exactly is mobile phone? Could you describe the existing business?
Oh, in, in our unit, in our unit, we're doing auto detailing.
Okay.
Right now, that's the only thing we're basically doing.
Okay.
And mobile electronics, like remote starters, we were able to install remote starters because it's something that we went to the select, selectmen, select board, right?
Yeah, the board of selectmen and they allowed us to do that.
We don't need no special licensing for it. It was already a previous auto detailing place.
Okay. And you, you have an op, excuse me, you have an operations, you have a license to operate the current business, currently?
Not needed for auto detailing.
Okay. So you operating right now auto detailing without, without a license?
Yes.
Okay. So is that license application forthcoming?
I, I, I am applying for a license which will be for the auto body shop.
Okay. But you're currently operating?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason why, and I'm not meaning to be cryptic, the reason why I'm asking the questions is I think because when I see auto body and, and mobile electronic, the mobile electronic component is the auto starter and, and that, that part of the business. Okay.
But not, not, not doing anything on the body shop end.
It's just the, the title of the business being transferred from Southbridge.
Right.
People knowing that that was the name of the facility.
Okay, so you're looking for name recognition here, based on existing business transferring over.
Yes.
So that's why the name indicates that.
Right.
Right now, you're currently operating in the body shop?
No.
No.
We're operating only in auto detailing.
Auto detailing.
And remote starters installation.
That's what I meant, auto detailing, I apologize. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And that's the part of the building you're going to turn into an auto body?
Yes.
So if I, if I might jump in.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Currently, you are operating a business without permit or a license.
We brought it to the attention of the office. We brought it to the attention to the office and let them know that we were running a business there and they said that we never needed a license to do.
But you, you, you don't have a permit to operate a detailing or an electronic business, but you are operating one?
It is not needed.
They said it was not needed. We saw.
It was not needed, a permit to operate?
No.
No.
And, and did you describe to them that it was an auto detailing business?
We did.
Where you use fluids and so forth?
We did. And because the business was an auto detailing facility prior to us moving in there, it was not required.
I'm familiar with the site and they have, other people have come in front of us in the past and this has pretty much almost always been an auto detailing place.
I see.
For quite a few years, it's been an auto detailing place. I should say that, not always, but so, and actually. always, but, so, and actually, I can recall in past times, the board, that this particular location has come in front of us.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, so I think what, what I was trying to, and I did a poor job of it, wrapping my head around is, is just a licensing piece, operate, is if, if they're operating now in, in a, in an auto detailing, can we get clarity on if a permit or a license is required to operate that business?
Well, it is, under the current situation with the zoning to Aquaphire District, it is required for automotive sales service, repair shops, automotive body and paint shops require a special permit.
Okay.
So for them to be a detail shop at this time, they do not require to be seen by us, but because they want to expand into body shop, spray booth, et cetera, et cetera, now it becomes our concern.
Okay, and thank you for that, for that background, because that's exactly what I needed. So from a detailing shop perspective, there is not a permitting process, a requirement for a license-
That's correct.
-to operate?
Correct. They could just go apply for a business license at the town hall and-
Okay, and they have, but they would need a business license?
We have a business certificate.
Okay.
Yes.
Business certificate. Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
I'm learning as I, I go with some of this, this particular piece, that's appreciated.
So some of the questions I have, you said you operated a body shop in Southbridge already?
Yes.
So will you be relocating your old spray booth, or are you purchasing a new one?
We will be purchasing a new one, because we had one that was already grandfathered in, so it was already in the building, you couldn't remove it.
Right, okay.
And I have all the information submitted to you guys that, about the, all the operation, the fire suppression system-
Sure.
-the duct that's going up in the ceiling.
Mm-hmm. Sometimes I just ask the question too, that even though you provide us with the information, it's for the folks at home to know that we've done our due diligence, we've done our homework. So sometimes I ask it just for the purpose of the record.
Mr. Chairman, because they're in the Aquaphire District, this is just a question for clarification. Would the Conservation Commission need to be questioned at all?
Did they meet with that?
I thought he said he met with the-
No.
Through the chair.
They met with the CCG.
Not formally, but if the board wanted their feedback on it, you could certainly ask, yes.
I will say that, having a little bit of knowledge in this area, that most of the products they're using today in terms of paint are all water-based. They're fairly safe. Believe it or not, you'd be more concerned with what's floating around in the air during the sanding process than you would actually what's being sprayed in the booth. The booth is a very controlled environment, it's going to collect all of that. It's more of a concern with how they're managing their chemicals in the shop itself, how they're managing the, what they call particulate solids that float through the air. So those are the real concerns, I think, in my humble opinion, we should be addressing. Also, some of the other solvents they use to remove paint are actually probably more, much more hazardous than the actual paint itself. So I think we'd want to know about, like, you have obviously a flammable safety cabinet in place, or you will?
We will be having it once everything goes to plan.
Okay.
There will be a little room aside the paint booth that will house all the painting equipment and-
That manages mixing, you're going to have like a mixing station in there?
Yes.
But it doesn't really deal with-
And a cabinet will be inside of the-
Okay, so like you're stripping and removing solvents, that's one of the concerns I have. That's going to go in a flammable safety cabinet?
Yes.
Right?
And I would also like to add that we will be running a water-based system.
Mm-hmm.
We're not going to have the other system.
Mm-hmm.
So it will be full water-based.
Okay.
Like no solvents at all.
Sure, okay. And how do we plan on, so are you going to be doing insurance type of work as well? Are you doing custom work, or?
Yes, we will be doing insurance.
Okay.
We are, we are registered shop.
Mm-hmm.
So once we get approved, we, we will be able to do the insurance job.
Okay, that's good to know. So we have a car with substantial damage that's leaking fluids, how do you plan on managing that if it gets towed into your property?
Okay, so one thing we're going to do is, which we spoke to the landlord, the landlord, we're going to put a water trap, how you call it?
It's a grease trap.
Grease trap.
It's going to have, it's going to, how's that, we talked about it with the, I'm not sure the water department-
DCG.
-required it.
Okay.
So we had discussed it with the landlord, and he agreed to meet us with installing this system, so that anything that is drained into the ground, because there is an internal drain in the building, so it would have to go into this grease, grease trap, per se.
Right, right.
And nothing would be drained into the town sewage or anything like that, that would be, you know, dirty, I guess.
And I think my own question is to ask for this clarification, is there a required schedule that would be for you to maintain that, basically an oil and water separator is really what it is, right?
Right.
So that's one of the concerns I have, because you know, is with sanding, different types of product, you're going to be wet sanding, they're going to be going down the drain, you're going to be collecting those in that water and oil separator.
Right.
So we need to know, or at least if there is a particular schedule that you could follow to make sure that's cleaned out, and we need some documentation on that.
Okay.
Not to prevent you from getting the permit tonight-
Right.
-but what I'm suggesting is if the board members agree, then that would probably be a required schedule.
Okay.
Again, and it's not to make things difficult for you, per se, it's because this is our water supply in town.
Right.
And this board is the stewards of the water supply, and we take that very seriously.
Right.
You know, we would, last thing we want to have is a contamination down there because of something that we overlooked or something that took place, you know, so that's why we have these concerns.
Last thing we want as well.
I have another question. If you're going to be running an auto body shop, you're going to be taking off a lot of parts off of cars. When I go by an auto body shop, it always looks terrible, because there's tons of things thrown in a pile outside, which tend to rust, it rains, they rust, all that rusty water's running. Now, how are you going to be handling parts that you take off of cars? Fenders, bumpers, wheels, whatever it might be, parts of a frame, who knows? How will you be handling those? Storage for them? And aft, after you've let us know what type of storage you're going to have? How long it will be, what would be your schedule to have those picked up? And I'm sure you'd be sending them to the scrapyard, because they're worth money.
I do, yes.
Go ahead.
Basically, we have a trailer, somewhat of a closed off trailer. We put the metal that we can send to the scrapyard, we put it there, and we cover everything up. The other, the other, whatever's trash, we have dumpsters in the site, whatever can go in the trash, will go in the trash. We also have anything that's hazardous, like the cleaning solvent for the paint and stuff. We have, we did a contract with Viola Company, I believe it is, Viola, which any chemicals that we have for the cleaning purposes and stuff, they can come and pick it up as we need to get rid of it, and also the, the filters, the old filters, they also come and pick it up.
So you're talking like, are you going to have a pot washer on hand? Pot cleaning tank?
No.
Okay. So this contract you're referring to is not something similar to like a safety clean, where they're going to take, they're going to, they're going to remove your old solvents and replace-
Yes.
-and replace the supply of fresh solvent, so to speak?
No, because we'll buy the fresh solvent, but they take the old.
Sure, okay, okay.
And filters.
And the old filters too.
Okay.
But none of the parts will be sitting outside, they'll be in an enclosed trailer, so we click with-
And is that a, like a tractor trailer, like a-
No, small trailer, like a utility trailer.
It's a utility trailer, and you will be taking that to the scrapyard?
Yes.
Yes, we take it ourselves.
Okay. Drain oil. You're going to run across that, right? Where you're going to experience having drain oil come out of a vehicle.
Right, and that company that he just mentioned, is it the company as well that will take that, you know, oils and greases and things like that?
For disposal.
Now, if I were to bring my, if I was to be in an accident and have my car towed to your place, would it be sitting stored outside?
No.
Because that would be of my concern with, if it's been in an accident, chances are it's going to be leaking fluid somewhere.
Right, no, we, we bring everything inside, and we, we don't take in more than we can handle, pretty much.
So there'll be no storage of cars to be fixed outside?
No.
No.
Mr. Chairman, if I-
Yes, Mr. Mayor, please.
Through the chair, so, Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
So just a couple of follow-up questions, and, and you may know this, and our, our authority with the town, Mr. May know this, are there specific permits for handling some of, I know, understand that you mentioned you'd be working with a, a water-based painting system, but some of the other chemicals that they'll need to purchase, house, are there special permits for those materials, or special licenses that they're required to carry for those materials on site?
I believe the Board of Health has strict regulations on materials regarding the, the spray booth, I believe. You may have already spoken to them? Yes.
Okay, and so that would be vetted by the Board of Health?
I believe so.
And you've done that, okay. Two quick questions, if I may. Signage. So are you going to be utilizing the existing sign? Are you going to be adding any signage to the property?
No, there, there's already an existing sign. If we, everything goes and gets approved, that's the sign we will use.
Okay. And that's an existing sign with your current name, or would that have to be, would the sign have to be changed in any way?
Um, no, we would just have to place our name, because it's like a big sign that's already there.
Understood. I know, I understand the marquee now. And then hours of operation that you're proposing?
Hours of operation will be nine to five.
Okay, Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday.
And then any, any hours on, on the weekends?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Rosa.
Any further questions?
I have none.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on the floor for the proposed permit application?
A motion to grant permit based upon one of the stipulations that you had, Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to add it to it, it was some, golly.
So we have conditions.
The schedule of that.
You have the oil and water separator?
That's it.
Is that what you're concerned with?
That's the schedule, that we, that we get the schedule, and the schedule be posted. Once you have that schedule, you post it, where you would be posting your business.
So in other words, you know how you have to, you have to post your permits in your office space, or wherever you do it? We'd like to know what that is, so if someone from the Board of Health or the Health Department walks in, they look at that schedule, they're going to see that you have a contract that's available, that these people come in and they take your solvents, they service all that stuff. So they want that contract on hand, and to make sure it's available. Contract for solvents, solvent removal specifically. Any other conditions?
Mr. Chairman, not, not a condition, but if, as we're discussing the, the motion before us, and I apologize, I stepped out for a moment. Did we ask the applicants, the number of employees, that would-
In fact, we did not. But I don't think we necessarily need to know that, we're not required to have that.
Okay. It, it, it's more of a, of a curiosity based on size of the location, but thank you. No, no additional conditions.
Through the chair, I can actually answer that.
Yes.
I believe it's just these two gentlemen here, and they do have to come before the planning board on April 28th for site, for a site plan approval and a special permit for multiple business use, so the parking and, and employees will be noted then.
Yeah.
And that was, that was where I was going with that, with that request, just based on site plan approval and whatnot, so no, no additional conditions, Mr. Chairman.
So again, because of the conditions of our mandate to protect Aquaphire, we want to make sure the oil and water separator schedule is posted on the premises, and we want also that contract for the solvent removal available at any time as well. So with that being said, do I have a motion to-
Through the chair?
Yes, please.
Could I just add to that? It may be beneficial for the Board of Health to be notified of, of the oil and water separation reports of when it's pumped, just so it's on record at the town hall, as well as on the site.
Okay, notify the Board of Health. Could you repeat that again? So I'm writing in my notes here for my decision.
Notify the Board of Health of, of the schedule and when it's actually maintained, so that we have the record at the town hall, as well as that on the site.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so the three conditions of the permit, before we continue with this, that the oil and water separator schedule will be posted on the premises, the contract for the solvent removal is available at all times, again, posted with your permits, and that we, if you do have to do any scheduled maintenance on that equipment, that you're going to notify the Board of Health. So if somebody comes in, let's say, oh, suddenly you find out, you walk in one day and that oil and water separator is clogged, you're going to notify the town to make sure that's done. Okay, so they have to come down and inspect it to make sure it's been cleaned properly.
Not just the maintenance, but when they, when they do the-
When they do the scheduled maintenance.
The schedule, I think the schedule should be sent to the town hall, also, to the Board of Health.
So you want the oil and water separator and the contract for the solvents to the Board of Health, both, I would think?
Yes.
Yeah.
Posted on site and at the Board of Health.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Posted. Site. E O H. Okay. So with that being said, do I have a motion to approve?
My motion to approve.
Yeah, now do I have a second?
I would second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, gentlemen, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you for your patience tonight.
Good night.